Ladies and gentlemen, 7:30, let me call the meeting to order for the September 23rd meeting of the planning board. Let me remind everyone to sign in and make sure your microphones are turned on if you're to speak to the board and speak clearly in the microphone so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, the next bike and pedestrian subcommittee meeting will be October 14th at 7:30 PM in the Memorial Conference Room. The next planning board meeting is scheduled for October 7th, 2014, 7:30 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room. Brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Donna, do you have anything to report for us?
Nope, not tonight.
Any questions by members of the board for staff? Stan, what do you got?
I'll wait until the end of the meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or opportunities to announce that you're gonna wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. Item three on our agenda is agendoned as Boomer McLeod Audio, Car Audio as the applicant and GFI Merrimack LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct a 7,500 square foot, two-story car audio and electronics retail, sales, and service building. Parcels located at 5 Executive Park Drive in the C2 Commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4D Lot 73. And as indicated, at least in my notes, I don't know if it was in the package, the applicant has withdrawn the application, so no action is needed other than announcing the withdrawal for anybody in the audience who came to hear that proposal. So, that application has been withdrawn and won't be considered by the board and obviously won't go forward, won't be approved. Brings us to item number four on the agenda, which is Tameesian Drive LLC as the applicant and the Stephanie Tameesian Revocable Trust as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a 19 lot cluster subdivision located at Tameesian Drive in the R1 Residential, Oxford Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts and Shoreland Protection Area, Tax Map 4B Lot 9-1. Donna, do we need to know anything before we hear from the applicant?
No, not really. Just the fact that the escrow has not been received yet, so there's no CLD comments. So, the board was wondering about that and that's why we haven't had anything from CLD at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Ken, I know we're familiar with you from all of our previous visits, but please go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening. My name is Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, here with Errol Dewey Masler from Tameesian Drive LLC in this application. And for the public or for any board members needing refreshing, this is for a 19 lot cluster subdivision for a property off of Tameesian Drive. The property is situated just to the north of Amherst Road and to the west of Tameesian Drive. Currently, Lot 9-1 is about 50 acres, few small fields on the front along Tameesian Drive, but it's predominantly wooded. And the most notable features include the town property to the west, known as the Ireland Parcel Conservation Area, as well as there's some frontage along the South Eagan River to the north. The subdivision's been before the board numerous times in the past year or so. We've progressed steadily with this development plan that you see before you. We've accomplished a great deal in our time here and arrived at this final application. As Donna pointed out and the memo also touches on, is we have a series of reviews or comments that have been done predominantly by town staff or departments. The memo includes comments from MVD, the fire department, Public Works Department, as well as staff. We have not submitted the escrow check for the CLD peer review at this time. We were waiting to get through this meeting to clear up as many of the comments in the memo as possible and boil it down to just a few items that we'd have to then concern ourselves with as we move forward with CLD. There's no rush to see this project through construction season, et cetera, so this won't occur for some time and so it's not like we're looking to rush this process along. As far as my presentation goes, I'm really going to refer substantially to the memo itself and more particularly our responses. And I have a letter that I'm going to be using as my outline, if you will, and I'm going to pass an original copy out to the board. This is necessarily new information. This is just a background for better understanding of our approach.
Thank you, Ken. So, this is your response to the staff's memo?
Sure.
Okay.
As you can see in the opening sentence, we're basically concurring with the vast majority of the comments that have been made. Quite frankly, there's a lot of housekeeping-related items, things that I recognize that I frequently catch after a plan sets completed and submitted. Sometimes I wish I had a little extra time to triple-check a few things. In this particular case, out of the several pages of comments through town staff, et cetera, I boiled it down to the handful of comments that you see before you tonight that I'd like specifically to touch on, get some feedback from the board. There's one waiver that we would like to request and then, quite frankly, I'd like to be tabled or continue that is to a future meeting so we can make plan revisions, file with CLD, have their comments back and plenty of time to address those and come back before you. So, the first item that I have in my comments, so my numbers correlate to the memo from staff, et cetera, so if you have a copy of that, you can see the larger comment as is made. I also, from my own purposes, hopefully no one's colorblind on the board, I actually highlighted some green and several yellow. The green ones have some substance to them that I really need some feedback from the board. Quite frankly, the yellow ones are fairly incidental and I'm sure that's something that Donna and I can sit down with and just knock those off too. I'll touch on them as I move forward, but they probably don't need too much, if any, discussion by the board unless you'd care to. As far as the subdivision itself goes, once again, our approach has not substantially changed for many, many months, perhaps six months or more. Most notably, the last time we were here, we talked about possibly having the needs to have some of the open space be situated on the lots themselves and be under an open space easement. This is a later comment, but I want to follow up on it first because it was our impression at the time when we were discussing this that as we wanted to lengthen the road a bit, thereby widening some of the lots, we just might fall below the 50% threshold earlier for open space. Earlier concepts showed that we had about 53, 54% open space and I really felt that we'd fall below the 50, not too far perhaps, but far enough to warrant having alternative open space configuration. Well, after we went through all the calculations and even though we did extend the road 150 feet or so, I was able to collect 50.9% open space without having to use and utilize the conservation easement approach. So, while I was appreciative that the board gave that due consideration, quite frankly, it turns out that that was not necessary. Fortunately, that proved out when we did some additional test pits, which really locked in that that was unnecessary. So, it was a worthwhile step. It was something that we needed to do just in case, but in this particular instance, it turned out that became unnecessary. Any questions on that before I move into some of these comments?
No, none for me.
Particularly, we need to discuss the waiver first. I think that's important. We're requesting a waiver from Section 4.18.2b of the subdivision regulations to allow about 150 lineal feet portion of the road grading to be at a slope, a fill slope of two to one, as opposed to the required maximum three to one, as Kyle Fox noted in his memo. The difference between the fill slope is really due to the location. We're proposing this side slope in the area of our wetland impact. A three to one slope would make a wider impact. It would mean more wetland disturbance. A two to one slope would mean less wetland impact. So, we're merely in that section seeking to reduce the impact of the wetland, reduce the environmental impact. I've evaluated this. I've taken a look at what's the difference, quite frankly, between a two to one slope impact and a three to one. And the three to one slope is something in the vicinity of, three to one is 3,300 square feet of impact, where the two to one is something in the vicinity of 2,700 square feet of impact. So, it's certainly less and when you talk about permitting with the DES, they would like it to be as minimal as possible. So, that's our goal. I discussed this with Kyle specifically. He does not favor this. Quite frankly, as far as his position goes, his job is as the town engineer is to look at it from singular viewpoints where three to one is the standard for him. Anything less than that, he doesn't care for. It goes to maintenance and goes to safety. So, ideally, he would like to stay at the three to one slope. I understand that, I respect that, and I hope I didn't put words into his mouth, but that's how I understand or characterize our discussion. I think it's worthwhile to do. From a side slope, from a stability standpoint, we are showing it to be stabilized. We will have matting in there that'll hold the slope and when it's seeded and grass is growing on it, it'll be stable. Two to one does not create an unstable situation. As far as safety goes, on the southerly side of the road, we have about a five-foot fill. Anything over five feet starts to require guardrails. On the north side, we have about an eight-foot fill. So, on the north side, we're proposing a guardrail through this section. Also, on the north side of the road is where we have our sidewalks and so there'll be the road, a curb, sidewalk, then a guardrail, then the two to one side slope if we are granted this waiver. I feel strongly that it's something that's worthwhile considering. This design currently does show that two to one side slope with the reduced wetland impact. My comment is that the side slopes will be stabilized and include guardrail on the north side for safety and this specific circumstance relative to the subdivision and conditions of this land indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. That's my brief summary or explanation of the waiver request. I'd like to pause there and have some brief discussion and I'm happy to answer any questions the board has on that.
I have a couple of questions. Ken, this discussion's familiar to me. Did we discuss this on this project or is this the same issue we faced on Chestnut Hill?
It's similar to other projects where especially, especially where there's a wetland crossing involved, we could have considered in this particular case a retaining wall. Quite frankly, a retaining wall is unnecessary. That actually adds its own future maintenance costs, not to mention the construction costs. Quite frankly, we just assumed do the three to one slope and create an impact than have retaining walls. This doesn't, this is not a substantial crossing, quite frankly. It's not a difficult one. It's just the nature of the side slopes per the regulations. So, yes, we've had this conversation and I suspect we'll have it again in the future.
Okay. With the three to one slopes, you mentioned how DES approaches it and obviously, less impact is better for them than more impact. If the waiver is denied, are you at risk of not receiving your DES approvals or is it really just a matter of making it more difficult for you?
I couldn't characterize it as that it's that we're jeopardy of not getting the crossing approved. If the waiver's not granted, in dealing with the state, we can relate that our design initially had two to one, the town directed us to keep it at three to one, and if that's the decision that we are given to proceed with the design, it's nothing, it's out of our hands, so to speak. The town has their standards and the town standards are driving how we design this. So, I don't see it as a, as something that'll prevent the permit from being granted, however I...
So, then you go to DES, we're the ones responsible for it?
We'll get blamed.
No, it's not that they're gonna call us up and blame us or something like that, but we give you the cover that you need to go with, go talk to them.
That's a nice way to put it. So, in fact, I agree that if that decision's directed towards us, that's how we proceed and we can in fact say, "We were specifically told and we tried to get the waiver, but if it was denied, it's denied and we proceed along."
Sure. I do want to discuss it a little bit more. When you get advice from Kyle or any of the town departments that want to see things done a different way, to me, it's a subject, whatever the subject matter of the request is, when a town department weighs in in one direction, it's something that we tend to give a lot of weight to. Doesn't mean we always follow it, but there certainly is a presumption that our town folks know what they're talking about, otherwise, why are they here?
Yep. And in full disclosure, I told Kyle that I would still be requesting the waiver even though he voiced his suggestions.
Oh, no, I understand. I wouldn't expect you to not ask for it.
Sorry.
You gotta come try.
However, Kyle's comment wasn't very elaborate. He didn't say he was absolutely against it in his memo. He just states that the subdivision regs require three to one slopes or flatter. We're requesting turf-reinforced two to one side slopes. So...
When it comes to maintenance, what kind of maintenance do you do on these slopes? Is it just mowing or is it?
Yeah. And two to one slope is not very steep, quite frankly. It's not one to one where you would think that you're having a mower would be likely to tip over. It's periodic grass mowing.
Would the town even come down this road to mow it or is it just gonna get grown up? I mean, it's not like they go around...
It's probably just gonna get grown up unless there's a need to perform some maintenance on it in the future. If it gets, if the inlet gets clogged with some tree branches and leaf debris perhaps, then they might mow it in advance of doing some maintenance. It's very low maintenance, quite frankly.
Remind me again about the inlet and the culvert pipe that's gonna go there?
In this particular case, we have a 30-inch culvert proposed. The inlet is on the south side, so water comes from Amherst Street through the island, right adjacent to the island property through here. Our road quote-unquote intercepts the water flowing periodically. That's why we have a culvert here. We have a riprap outlet and then the water continues on down to the South Eagan River. So, it's a 30-inch culvert proposed. We may increase that if DES feels that a larger pipe, while not serving drainage calculations necessarily, but say perhaps some amphibians of some sort, they frequently like the culvert to be a bit oversized just to accommodate some...
Yeah, I understand. You got some questions from the National Heritage Bureau?
Yep, I can touch on that shortly.
You wanna do that separately?
I can do that now if you'd like.
Does it relate to this? I mean, do you got turtles trying to cross this culvert or?
Perhaps. And a later comment that I have to share goes to the nature, the disposition of the open space. It's a lot, as we've done in the past, maybe it's fractionally owned by the landowners. Maybe it has a conservation easement. Maybe the land itself gets conveyed to the town. This is a later topic, but we were required or requested by Fish and Game, they have an opportunity to weigh in when we talk about inventory, national heritage inventory. They look at endangered, threatened, or species of concern in the general project area. In this particular general project area, some instances of spotted turtle, box or wood turtle, and one other variety of turtle that's escaping me now, blamish turtle. So, three types of turtle were known to exist in the general project area, not on this property specifically necessarily, and we were asked to increase or consider increasing the pipe size to 36-inch and make it an RCP, a reinforced concrete pipe. At this point, I see no reason why we can't do that, but that's not our current design.
Okay.
Quite frankly, there's not much difference between a 30-inch and a 36-inch culvert.
But what would you make the 30-inch if it isn't concrete?
Generally, we do plastic pipe nowadays. Certainly has, it's very durable and actually...
Yeah, I'm just checking.
It withstands the loading and generally the corrugated pipes slow down and help with controlling the speed with which the water goes through the pipe, which means you generally need less riprap on the outlet side.
I understand that, yep.
So, from, as far as the culvert size go, whether it's 30 or 36, it doesn't materially change your design. If we do go with the three to one slopes, we'll have to have a longer section of pipe because the side slopes will be drawn out, if you will, made wider, longer section of pipe and we may need a little bit additional riprap if we follow all of the recommendations from Fish and Game, which means, once again, all of that adds incrementally to a larger wetland impact. However, if the planning board drives that and says, "Please do two, three to one slopes" and Fish and Game says, "Please increase your pipe size from 30 to 36," these are things from our design, they're certainly easy to revise. It just means a larger wetland impact.
Thank you for that explanation, Ken. This is Stan.
Yeah. You wanted to know what we were thinking, Ken. I have to say, I admire you a lot because you're very good and you know your material, but I'm an average resident of Merrimack and I'm not an engineer or an environmentalist. And we get, we have consultants that we get. You're waiting for a report from CLD. Well, you just gave us a report from Kyle Fox, who's recommending to me, who's my consultant, that we go with a three to one, three to one. Unless something comes up that you could talk me into a two to one, I'm just letting you know, I'll be looking at the three to one.
Understood. And in fact, I'm hopeful that the board has enough information to thoroughly discuss it and then make a motion to accept or deny the waiver.
Okay. I understand. It doesn't sound like it upsets you one way or another too greatly, as long as you have a definitive answer. Nelson?
Yeah. First of all, could you indicate on the map just where this is and the length of the fill apron that will be constructed?
Oh, okay. Well, once again, in the overall project, and then we have our road, which historically has been pretty standard in its location, I'll zoom right in to our culvert here and this is the wetland line here, this green line. This blue line is our culvert. And right now, the limit of two to one slope goes just about right to the sideline of the right-of-way. This is a 50-foot wide right-of-way and the two to one grading comes right about there. On the outlet side, the grading exceeds and goes beyond the right-of-way and we have an easement line here, which we unfortunately didn't capture this riprap area, which was one of Kyle's comments that we've certainly agreed to revise. But you can see this hatching area. This hatching represents the area of the two to one slope that would have the matting, the fabric to help stabilize it until the grass has matured and stabilized on its own. So, if we were to say, go to the three to one, we would be out in here, near this easement limit with our fill slope. Well, once again, it just, it makes the fill slope wider. It doesn't necessarily materially change our design overall or the approach. It's just a larger footprint.
On the right-hand side of the diagram, you're talking about a five-foot elevation, so a one-foot change in the slope would be about a five-foot width on the apron too, wouldn't it?
Yeah. In this case, it's the five-foot height differential is on the southerly side, which is the left side of the road as you go down the stationing.
Okay. So, in a two to one slope, your apron's 10 feet wide and a three to one's gonna be 15 feet wide?
Yeah.
And on the other side, how much wider is it footwise in terms of footprint?
Probably in the vicinity of another three to four feet.
Okay. Nelson?
And could you repeat the area difference that's affected? You mentioned something like 3,000 and something like 2,000.
The three to one slope results in roughly about 3,300, 3,300 square feet of impact, where the two to one slope is about 2,700, 2,700. So, it's a 600-foot difference.
600-foot difference, yeah.
And, you know, when you're talking about only about a 3,000 square foot impact, 600-foot difference is a large percentage, but it's...
Pretty small.
I think it's worthwhile to consider, however, a pleasure of the board.
It's half the size of the room that we're in? The impact's about half the size of this room, 600 square feet? Something like that?
No. Can't be. Well, maybe 60 by 10.
Does that impact including the street or just the slopes?
Yeah.
The street width plus the slopes?
Exactly. If you take, as the street crosses, bisects the wetlands and the culvert allows the flow to continue, that includes everything that is along the wetlands and then out to the limit of the fill itself.
And some of this will be on what will be private property, right? There will have to be easements there?
Correct.
For the...
Any side slope for any drainage or grading that exceeds the 50-foot standard width is then captioned an easement.
And if you went with the steeper slope, would that still require easements from the property owners?
Yes.
Yeah. So, it's just a matter of the size of the 600 feet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, questions?
That's about it for questions, I think.
Before we take up the easement, I want to know if we've accepted the project and I know we want to get some public testimony, so I don't know if we're gonna make decisions on the waiver just yet, but if there's no more discussion on it, Ken, tell us about the rest of the project. Tom?
To weigh in a little bit on that. If I understood you correctly and if I look at or listen to Kyle's responses, he really didn't have a strong argument one way or another. We're going with the three versus two, except to say that that's in our current standards and therefore we ought to support that. Was that, that was your impression? I'm not asking to put words in his mouth.
If you read, if you read the comments that he prepared, it's rather factual. It's not necessarily siding with an opinion that it's reasonable or unreasonable. However, in discussions with him, I will share that he was not favorable to it. And once again, I view that from his role and his capacity as the town engineer without having to weigh and balance other factors that I might have and the way I look at it. So, I think it's fair to say that he is not in favor of it, but may not take into the account the overall other factors that I have to. I hope I said that properly in case you...
And he said earlier, he mentioned maintenance was one of the issues. What else did he, did he mention any other reasons for the...
He didn't mention the safety aspect of it, but quite frankly, when you take a look at the ordinance and you are asking a waiver, you need to address the intent of that regulation. So, what is the intent of a side slope regulation? To me, it's the maintenance of it, the stability of it, as well as the safety factor of it. So, given those two items that I think the intent goes to, I think that this is a very reasonable request on a waiver to do for this limited portion of the road as we cross the wetlands. We're not asking for it in the other areas. We're merely asking due to the specific section of the road at the wetland crossing.
Now, you're gonna have a sidewalk there, so pedestrians are not gonna be walking on the slope?
Correct.
And how wide is the roadway?
It's 24-foot.
So, it's not really very narrow or restricted, obviously?
No, it's not. And then it's a five-foot paved sidewalk, it's standard in town.
The guardrail that you mentioned, was that going in regardless or is that only because of the two to one slopes?
At the, at the three to one side slope threshold, in fact, we may not need that guardrail. I'd have to, I'll have to double-check that. It goes to the overall height and I think at the eight-foot, if we're on a three to one slope, if I remember the graph properly, we may not need that guardrail, which we'd be happy to remove.
If you had to do the extra three feet or the extra three to one slope, I'm sure you'd want to. I guess I'm not hearing any strong argument for a short piece of road that goes over wetlands to require the three to one. It seems like the savings of the wetland impact would probably be worth it, even though it's relatively small compared to the overall impact. Anything is useful. Is it, is it truly wetland or is it just defined as wetland? Or is there water running in it?
I look at those as the exactly the same. If it's jurisdictional wetland, it's jurisdictional wetland, but there is an intermittent runoff that flows through that.
There's some wetland I can walk across all the time.
So, at wet parts of the year, then absolutely, yeah, there is flow.
Okay.
Yes.
But there are parts of the year where there isn't?
Correct.
Flow, okay.
Chairman, when I spoke with Kyle earlier today, he said that he was opposed to it because he thought there were other ways to work around it so he would fit in with the regulations. So, that's what we discussed today.
So, he could build the three to one slopes and still get by DES, the same thing, same conversation that we're having, that it could be done the other way?
And he further, if I can, if I may, he further elaborated when I mentioned the retaining wall aspect, that was one workaround, so to speak, that he mentioned and quite frankly, the construction costs and the future maintenance costs for a short section of retaining wall is just not warranted. I'd defer right back to the three to one slopes as opposed to trying to have a short retaining wall there.
So, you would be adding about 13 feet to the length of the culvert of the pipe or whatever underneath the road?
Something in that vicinity. Something in that vicinity.
Okay. 10 to 13 feet or something, just to increase the slopes and get the culvert out far enough and the riprap out far enough. To something that's already 24-plus quite a bit, do you know how long that is?
It's actually a 60-foot pipe right now.
I was gonna say, it's already 60 feet.
Yeah.
So, something I've encountered in a different town with pipes this size that run dry is, is there anything that keeps the kids from playing in the pipes?
Their parents.
Certainly an important...
I know that doesn't work personally, but I...
Well, the reason for asking is I know that you can, you can probably come up with some kind of a physical structure, but then you got the turtle problem and you can't let them get through the...
Well, the problem on the inlet side is that then you are creating an impediment already to then exacerbate leaves, and you'll create the buildup. So, you know, I suppose I was joking as I blurted out my initial answer, but no, there was, there's not.
No, it's not a bad answer, but I get it. But kids still get there. A thirty-six-inch pipe that doesn't have any water in it, pretty inviting for kids, so.
It's fine. I, I used to do that.
Well, I did too. That's why I know.
I did too.
Tell us about the rest of the project, so we can get to the point where we accept jurisdiction and then get some public comment.
Well, if, if I could touch on the other items that I called out, and once again, I only call these out because I either have some minor issue to resolve, or I wanted to get some input from the board. The rest of the comments that are in that memo, we concur with, and quite frankly, we've already made probably ninety percent of those plan revisions already. One thing that I'm not sure how it'll work out, Kyle had his comment eight dot I regarding a foundation drain. We show, in particular, on this lot here, I'm sorry, lot eight here, tie in a future foundation drain into the closed system at this location. We're going to try to pre-design a house at a certain location and elevation, so we can avoid that. So hopefully, we'll try to work that out on our own. I don't have the answer for it. I just wanted to, I didn't add it to your list. It just is something that came to my mind that I thought I should comment on. I'm going to skip over the staff comments that are fairly minor in nature and let Donna know that personally, I can come in and we can talk about them. Having to do with signature block, planning board approval block, a couple of notes and language as far as titling of certain sheets. Item nine in the staff, on the second page, I've, I just talked about briefly. I kind of expanded my initial opening relative to the open space percentage. So we're at fifty point nine now, so we are currently meeting the requirement in the regulation. Item O, as far as the legend, once again, I'll deal with Dawn on that specifically. So this brings me to my, my other major topic for tonight is the, the nature of the open space itself. I met with the Conservation Commission a week ago Monday, a week ago last night, and as we're required to, to see them, because a portion of this property is subject to the aquifer zone, albeit a slight sliver along the river. One of my items with them is to, to say, in the past, we've talked about the open space. Are they willing and accepting to oversee an easement if that's what the board and the applicant wishes to do? Unfortunately, we have yet to receive their comments on that. My sense was that it was something that they were certainly very willing to consider, but they have not put that down in paper, so I don't have their opinion yet on that. As far as the board's concerned, I would like to have some type of conservation easement on it, and that in part goes to the wetlands permit. Once again, since there are endangered, threatened or turtles of concern in the general area, DES or Fish and Game in particular would like us to have a greater protection on the open space, not just what you have in your regulations. That allows for athletic fields, or some fairly active use of the open space as opposed to passive use, which I think we would like to see, I think is more appropriate. In the past, I've mentioned the town-owned parcel, the Ireland parcel. I've just called up some language. This is actually a portion of the deed that the Ireland's, when they conveyed the property to the town. It's for conservation and public park purposes. It shall be maintained in its natural state as much as possible. Purposes are for protecting the town of Merrimack's open space lands, conservation, preservation. If I go to the second page, it says low-impact recreational and educational uses, hiking, wildlife observation, jogging trails, cross-country skiing, so on and so forth, but not for athletic fields. And the town shall prohibit the use of motorized vehicles, all touring vehicles, snowmobiles or motorcycles, otherwise anything motorized and wheeled. We would think that this is very reasonable to, to mimic, and basically to use pretty much the same language, because the open space here on this particular development is going to be an extension of the existing Ireland one, and so it seems logical to maintain it in the same fashion.
So having a, an easement like that, or some language like that, instead of just declaring it open space as the regulations require, helps you out with Fish and Game?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I did, and for the board's benefit, received comments from the Conservation Commission, and they didn't discuss that issue in the comments they sent to me. Did you get comments? Did you get a copy of the comments they sent to me?
I have not. And then this was a result of last, the Monday, not last night, but the previous week, Monday's meeting?
Sure, yes. And I can read them to you and make sure that you get a copy of them before we get together again, but they're fairly innocuous. This past Monday evening, the Conservation Commission discussed the application of Tomasian Drive LLC. Ken Clinton of Meridian Land Services provided an overview of the site located at Tomasian Drive. Ken detailed the location layout of nineteen lot cluster subdivision and a single wetlands crossing. At the time of our meeting, which was September fifteenth, twenty fourteen, the DOT permit and wetlands permit had not been filed. Ken explained that he needed to wait to file the permits until he received comments from the state of New Hampshire. The commission, by consensus, did not see any issue with the location of the crossing. However, we did not see fit to make a comment on permits that were not yet filed or provided. Comment two, the National Heritage Bureau alerted Ken, and, and he passed the information along to us with regards to endangered turtle sightings in the local area, other proposed subdivision, spotted and Blandings turtles. Fish and Game had yet to provide their final comments to Ken, so again, the commission did not see fit to make a comment on something the experts had yet to comment on. Comment three, the commission recommended that the deeds of the nineteen parcels, nineteen properties include guidance regarding non-use of salt-deicing compounds and only low phosphate, slow-release nitrogen fertilizers because of the proximity of the Salhegan River. Comment four, the commission believes that the donation of the open space fifty point nine percent would positively impact our ability to protect the Salhegan as well as the Fields Farm open space to the west. The commission thanks the board for considering the recommendations. So I hope you agree that those are fairly positive and fairly innocuous comments from the Conservation Commission, but they didn't mention the issue about the difference between a more in-depth use easement, rather than just declaring it open space.
Could you reread that last one again? I think I missed something in it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Get my phone to cooperate with me here. Item four, the commission believes that the donation of the open space fifty point nine percent would positively impact our ability to protect the Salhegan, as well as the Fields Farm open space to the west.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Now, they do use the word donation. I don't know if that means they're looking to have it deeded to the town rather than having an easement over it, but even if you deeded it, you could deed it with a restriction.
Correct. Regardless of if it was conveyed, gifted to the town of Merrimack, you would still have a conservation easement over it, whether it was retained by the nineteen owners in a fractional interest, or if it was conveyed to the town. Either way, we envision that it would have a conservation easement on it.
And I think when we talked about the differences between those two before, your preference was to not do fractional ownership of common area. And I think we all shook our head up and down, said that's what you should do.
I think it's better for the town to outright have fee ownership of that and have it be subject to the conservation easement. That sets the guidelines for its use in a similar fashion as the Ireland parcel.
Whether or not it's good for the town, I think it's good for the residents there not to have shared ownership of property, because that's always a recipe for headaches. Other information that you want to provide to us before we consider?
No. Not having had the benefit of reviewing the memo from the Conservation Commission, I, I suppose at this point, I'm encouraged by some of their comments, however, certainly they're not definitive. And once again, we intended to request to be tabled to a future date anyways, and so I'd expect that we'd have some communication. Now that I have the Fish and Game comments in hand, which we received, I believe it was yesterday morning, and so I can close that loop with the Conservation Commission and hopefully get their full endorsements on that level.
Tim forwarded this to me ten o'clock this morning, so.
Okay.
He can forward it to you, and...
I don't even want to ask this question, but I will. Could you explain to me the story about the turtles? Who saw it when? How many years ago? Is it just somebody making up a story?
No. Well, maybe, perhaps, but very, very briefly, and I won't dwell on this long. When we make an application to the DES to cross a wetland, this is, this is our application package. It's not one piece of paper. It's a booklet that we have to supply information. One of those items that we have to supply is we have to prompt a review or request, have there been any sightings? And once again, it's the National, Natural Heritage Bureau. What they do is they go into the database, and for the camera at home, and sorry, this is so small, they have a database of where they have had reported sightings. And in this particular case, while our project, forgive me again about the size, our project's in the middle here, there's a little black rectangle. Over here in Amherst, at Salhegan Woods Golf Course, there was a sighting of a spotted turtle some years past. Over here across Wilson Hill Road to the northeast, across the Salhegan River, there was a sighting of a Blandings turtle in two locations. And then most importantly, or substantially, in the Horse Hill Preserve, there had been some sightings of turtles. And then, as I understand, the Conservation Commission did a joint effort with Fish and Game.
Okay. You answered my question, because there are facts.
Yes.
Going back a few years, a development was held up because somebody said in the deep woods, there was a rock. That was a sacrificial altar for Indians. So the historic, State Historical Society had to check it out, and there was no value to it. So I was just wondering.
And we have to review similar concerns in that fashion, too.
Yeah, sure.
So there, it's the initial sightings, who, who was the actual person, what were the circumstances? I don't know.
Hey, if they print it, it's okay with me.
Thank you, Stan. Thank you, Ken. Anything else that you'd like to provide us before we?
With that, you know, I'd, I'd hope to have a decision on the waiver item, get some feeling from the board as far as your position on how you would like to see the open space.
Okay.
Yes. And then from there, recognizing the timeline and their desire to then resubmit so CLD can complete the appear review, I'd look to be tabled until the October twenty-first meeting.
Thank you, Ken. Now, the staff's first recommendation is that we recommend, that they recommend that we accept the application as substantially complete, containing enough information for the board to make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we follow the staff's recommendation and we accept this application for review.
Is there a second for that? Second by Stan?
Yeah.
Do you have a comment, or is that a second?
Nope, that, that was a...
Okay. Thank you, Stan. Is there any other comments on accepting the application? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? For the benefit of Zina, we'll appoint Stan, I mean, Nelson, to vote for Mike, since we just heard a vote from him. That makes it six zero zero to accept the application. Does the board have any other questions from Ken before we take public input on the application?
Mr. Chairman, could I just, and I know I missed, I wasn't attending your last visit, Ken, because I was otherwise engaged three and a half thousand miles away. Can I just have the confirmation that the original three houses on the southern side of Tomasian Drive are going to have underground electricity, as I originally asked for when you first came before me, but you will take the poles away and put underground services?
I have a short answer, but I'm not going to give it. The long answer is that the approval of those three lots are completely separate and distinct from what we're discussing now.
I know that.
However, because of the progress on this cluster subdivision, my clients have started road upgrades through Kyle Fox's office and the Public Works Department, and that is their intent to go ahead, since they'd require those utilities anyways for this subdivision, to go ahead and get that work underway. So I would say that at this point, it's more than likely, far more than likely, that everything will be underground.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Other, any board members require any other information before we take public testimony? Is there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in, provide the board any information before we consider this application any further? Is anyone? Pete? Pete, would it be better to sit with a microphone than stand up? Whatever you want to do.
Is this someone? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say, I've spent some time going over the engineering work that's taken place in this particular plan.
Pete, we all know you, but you still have to introduce yourself.
Pardon?
You still have to introduce yourself, even though we all know you.
Oh, yes. No, I'm going to leave it to the peer review to assess the impact of the plan, but I think I, I think it's a good compromise between the state's minimum standards and the town's minimum standards for development of this parcel. As you can see, it's a rather comprehensive plan. The average season of high water table in most of those homes is somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-eight to thirty inches. In another sector, it's probably thirty-two inches. That means you have to raise onsite disposal systems above the season of high water table, which in core, naturally would require a fair amount of fill if it's not mined from the site. But that being, that's not an unusual activity that normally takes place in, in the process of development of a subdivision. I think one very important thing that the board might want to explore is we, these lands open up, there's a great amount of difficulty in them, but the, you should take a hard look at the new, the revised sewer master plan. It's extremely comprehensive. It's taken up from the times, the old original plan. Which one was that, Nelson?
I'm not sure.
The original sewer master plan?
The original sewer plan was in the seventies.
Sewer, yeah.
Yeah.
That was in the seventies.
Hamilton Engineering, yes. Well, it's a very substantial departure from that. The interesting thing, part, part about this is that there are priorities for each of the drainage areas that will be, that the town will be sewer-ing up. And these are set on, on, on the basis of the need to protect places like the Lake, Natticook Lake. There's a priority being applied in that particular area, and also all along other areas that are very intensely developed. That's where the sewer plan's going to be designed. In this particular area, if you look at that particular plan, before the sewer gets out into this area, it's rated as number twenty-ninth on the priority list. Now, sixteen, seventeen up around Babu'sak Lake are rated sixteen, sixteen and seventeen, somewhere right around those numbers. The cost is forty million dollars just to do those. That's not taking care of new development. So I caution you, as this land begins to become under pressure for development, that you want to look at that as part of our master plan and our master sewer plan, and understand what's to take place. The key is going to be the work that is done by the soil scientists in these lands. And I believe that the, a work that has been accomplished in the soil redefinition in this particular area was extremely well-done, in my opinion. The, the only thing I happened to notice that was not on the plan is soil scientist stamp of the work that he accomplished, and I'll stamp to be corrected on that, if you may.
You got a stamp from the soil scientist?
Yes, my partner's stamp will be on the, the next plan set.
Okay.
We have a statement of who did the work and when as a note, but it's not stamped.
Oh, okay. Which sheet is it?
It would be sheet one of the subdivision plan.
There is, yes. I remember seeing it now.
Okay. We have, generally, we have standard notes as far as who does what work. And in our particular office, we have certified wetland scientists, certified soil scientists, and septic designers who all contribute to the plan and the design, and so they're all noted. septic designers who all contribute to the plan and the design, and so they're all notified on the cover sheet. And they'll, when we submit the next set, all of their stamps and signatures will be on that.
All right. Thank you for your response.
Note six on the cover.
So, looking to the future, that's what I'm trying to aim you at, into a picture of what's in the future for the town. We don't have the kind of money in to sewer just the areas that are with, that are being prioritized, and the important areas. And it's, it would become a very substantial burden on the town. So, when we open up new areas, we want to give a lot of thought to how that land is used. As you can see from this plan, there's a lot of substantial engineering that's taken place, had to be taken place, and I believe that, that, that's the type of thing that we're going to have to look at in the future. Other than that, I have no, no problems with the, the proposal as it is.
Thank you, Pete. Benefit of anybody who's never met Pete, that's Pete Gagnon, since he introduced himself. It's okay.
He used to be on the other side of that.
I know. Certainly longer than I've been on this side of it. Any other abutters or citizens wish to weigh in, provide any information to the board? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have before us the waiver that the applicant asked for, and then the staff has suggested in its memo that there's a potential need to waive a notation on plans of road widths. Do you know what that's about, Ken?
Yeah, Donna can correct me. I think we failed to label the existing Tamesian Drive as a variable width right-of-way with a variable width gravel surface. So, no waivers necessarily there will.
So, if you fix the label, then we don't need that waiver?
Correct.
Okay. So, the only thing that we need to talk about is?
The slope.
The two-to-one or three-to-one slope, as far as the waiver goes?
Correct.
What's the will of the board?
Could I just make one comment, Mr. Chairman? If I'm thinking we're trying to preserve these wonderful turtles that may or may not be around, surely the, the steeper the slope will discourage the turtles trying to go up the slope and cross the road, and will encourage them to go under the road and through the culvert. So, I personally think the two-to-one slope is quite satisfactory, and I would like to make a motion that we grant the waiver that has been requested.
Is there a second?
On the grounds that...
I second that.
I forget it, I never get it right.
Well, he had it on his letter.
That's the strict conformity, and the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Specific circumstances or the conditions of the land, particularly given that it's wetlands, indicate that the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations, and will also find favor with the D E S.
Desiree, you were seconding that motion? I'm not sure whether the two-to-one slopes or three-to-one slopes affect the turtles or not, but I think a lesser impact on the wetlands is a good thing to aim for. And although 600 square feet may not be an enormous amount, why impact more than you have to? I can't think of any reason to. I don't think that it's... Stan?
Speaking on the motion, I respect Ken, because he's always given a good presentation, everything. And everything he's always said in the past has been correct. I want to believe him now, but at the same time, our consultant said he's not recommending it. So, just because of that fact, I'm going to vote no, and listen to our consultant, which is the D P W.
Thank you, Stan, for the comment. Tom, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
The only comment I would point is to agree with Alastair that the, the two-to-one slope sounds like a good deal to me, a good plan to minimize wetland impact. And if you even look at the length of the culvert, it, from 60 feet up to 70 feet, just to go to a three-to-one slope, makes it even that much harder to consider that anything might travel through it on its own. And so, all of those factors, you know, kind of work together to, to seem to be a reasonable accommodation for a very short distance, and to ensure that there's a guardrail that goes in on the eight-foot side, it was even a little bit better of an enhancement as far as the safety factor is concerned. I could see going off the five-foot bank, but off the eight-foot bank would be a little bit more troublesome to me.
I agree with that, and I also agree with a 24-foot roadway and a sidewalk next to it. The safety is certainly perfectly managed by what you've built, and then having a guardrail on the side of it, on the sidewalk side of it, I think closes the, any concern you might raise with safety. Nelson had to stand up first.
I just wanted to agree with Tom's argument on this, and I think I will be voting in favor of this waiver as well, for the reasons he stated.
Thank you. Desiree?
With 10 feet less of tunnel for kids to go through, so we get a waiver, too, yeah.
That's, oh, no. I like the tunnel.
Stan?
One more girl's a going, because it's a flong.
Yeah.
Because the board has been so eloquent, I just want to say that I'm going to be changing my mind. If you want to know why I went from voting yes, it's because what you said.
All right.
And what Tom said, too.
In the spirit of moving the meeting along, why don't we go ahead and vote? All in favor of the waiver as proposed, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to grant the waiver, so you can have the two-to-one slopes. And then you wanted to have some discussion about what the board's intent was on the use of the open space.
Yeah, it's final disposition. I sense from the discussion that the board is fine if the open space was conveyed to the town with conservation easement, that would have very similar, if not the same, language as the Ireland parcel adjacent to it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, if, if you want a motion, Ken, I'd like to make a proposal that we accept this offer from the applicant and his engineer, and go forward on that basis.
I'm not sure whether a motion's necessary or not, but if you want to make one.
Consensus, that gives me the direction that I can then proceed in, and so I'd appreciate that.
That was turned on for Stan earlier. Okay, if consensus is satisfactory to you, then?
I won't make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I would support the easement. I don't, necessary or not, I think it's a better use of the land to put that easement on there and restrict the use in the same way as the abutting conservation properties. Nelson?
Yeah, I wanted to strengthen that and say I would encourage that kind of an easement on this property because of its proximity adjacent to the Ireland property. And so, I would encourage you to pursue that, and I would encourage those others in the town, the Conservation Commission and so on, to...
Support it.
To support it. Could I ask just one question about that? That little road that goes all the way around the periphery of the property?
Yes.
Is that still in place with?
It is.
It will be, and it will be...
Perfect walking trail.
It's a perfect walking trail, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on this? Does that give you the consensus that you're looking for?
Yes, it does.
Is there anything else we need to address tonight before we continue you to another date?
Continuing, and I've requested for October 21st, I believe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that at the request of the applicant and his engineer, we grant a continuance to October the 21st, 2014, planning board meeting at 7:30 P. M. in the Matthew Thornton Room, with no further notification to abutters.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Desiree Fault. Any discussion? Tom?
I just wanted to ask staff, you said the 21st or November 4th, so that you'd have more time. Is the 21st sufficient?
Yes, that's fine by us.
Thank you.
And obviously, that, Ken, you've got to get that money to CL, the escrow check to the town to go to C L D pretty soon.
Pretty damn quick.
Yes, we do.
Are we going to, are we going to use the same site plants, same, or are we going to get new ones? In other words, save these?
He wants to know whether he has got to save your...
There'll be new ones.
New ones?
I guess in closing, my intent, once again, is to go through all of the comments that were in the staff memo, resolve a few outstanding issues through Donna administratively, and then we would revise our plans, provide a new set, so C L D can do the review along with the escrow funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. All in favor of the continuance to October 21st, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. We will see you in about a month.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ken. You did a good job with your presentation.
Beautiful.
You serve your clients well.
I really don't care about the others.
I gathered.
Ken? How do we have a little...
Item number five on our agenda is John J. Flatley Company as the applicant and owner in its review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a conditional use permit to permit a future mixed-use development consisting of industrial, multifamily residential, commercial, restaurant, and retail uses. The parcels are located at number 645, 673, 685, 703, and 707 DW Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, and Wellhead Protection Districts. Tax map 6E, Lot 3-1, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5, and 3-6. The item was continued from the July 22nd, 2014, and August 5th, 2014, and September 9th, 2014, planning board meetings. The applicant has requested another continuance in order to have opportunity for the staff to review comments from C L D, and they are asking for a continuance to our October 7th meeting, which is our next meeting. Donna, is there anything else we need to know about the request for continuance or the application in general?
No, not at this time. It's just that there was a misunderstanding of when plans needed to be into staff, so staff did not have time, so they're going to continue to revise them until the next meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman of Donna, do you have the plans now?
We do not.
When, when do they have to get them to you in order for you to be prepared for October 7th?
I'm not sure. That's been, technically, the submitted deadline would have been September 16th, but since it's a continuance...
When, when, does the applicant know when they have to get them for you in order for you to have time to review them for October 7th?
They will. They're waiting on the traffic peer review right now.
Okay.
And trying to incorporate that into their other plans.
Okay. Stan?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask if there's anybody here for the Flatley Company presentation? Okay, because my concern is we've postponed this so much, and I hate to see people coming in and then waiting and then...
I may be wrong, but I'm not sure we've ever seen a person abutter with this one.
We have, and we did have one come tonight. I just let her know that.
Oh, okay.
It was going to be continued.
Identified, okay.
But there's nobody here, so I...
Not anymore.
That's because?
She was here earlier.
Donna, talk to her. What's the will of the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this matter to October the 7th meeting at 7:30 P. M. in the Matthew Thornton Room of the Town Hall, with no further notification to abutters.
Is there a second for that?
A second.
Second by Desiree? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to continue. Item number five on the agenda. Brings us to item six on our agenda, which is Keach Nordstrom Associates, Inc., as the applicant and Valley View Revocable Trust, Carol Maggio trustee, as the owner, and it's a compliance hearing pursuant to the planning board's July 8th, 2014, grant of a six-month extension to meet precedent conditions of approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel's located at 15 Valley View Drive in the R Residential District, tax map 5C, Lot 142. Donna, do we need to know anything before we hear from the applicant?
No, I'll let the applicant and the property owner explain.
And for the public's benefit, we were given some color photographs tonight, which were provided to us, which I'm sure will be part of the presentation. Please come forward, introduce yourself, sign in, and tell us what's up.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Peter Julia, project manager with Keach Nordstrom Associates, here on behalf of Mr. Maggio in the application in front, excuse me, the compliance hearing in front of you this evening. The packet you have before you with the color photos is intended to address the main, three main issues of, that were raised at the previous hearing in regards to this project. The first one was access, and that's what photo one shows, that temporary barricade was erected the following morning from that meeting in July. The photo number two below that shows actually a Ho-Ram is the white-looking apparatus. The one beyond that is an excavator performing construction activities on the access road in preparation for both the access road improvements, as well as the water main that will be extended through there. Photo number three shows the condition of that roadway when we were here last month. Now, that, the roadway was the extension of Valley View Drive as part of the 2012 application approval. Photo number four shows it as it exists today, substantially stable, grass growing on the side slopes, and the roadway relatively clean and, and open and free for travel. Photo number five shows what was a portion of the previous contractor, who has since been removed from the site. There is a new contractor presently operating on-site right now. So, four, five represents what was, what is to be the emergency access road between the two Valley View Drives. And then photo number six shows it as it exists today. Now, you can see that white excavator with the Ho-Ram attachment on it. Its very presence on the site is because while preparing to excavate the trench for the water main extension, they hit ledge. And so, the Ho-Ram was to remove the ledge from within the trench mechanically, as opposed to blasting. The last photo, number seven, was actually taken this morning by myself. It shows the contractor excavating to find the end of the existing water main on the opposite end of Valley View Drive. The yellow house in that background, I believe, is the Amex residence. And they had to dig many locations, and as I asked my client, who's here this evening, seated to my right, Mr. Maggio, they still did not find the end of the water main where they were supposed to tie into. Now, I just would say editorally, the representative from Merrimack Water District was present during all these exploratory excavations, and they still didn't find it. So, that was the reason for those photos that you have in those packets. Within the packet, also, there was a, and I apologize, it's, it's very small, that's why I added the color, just to kind of give you an idea within this two-lot subdivision application is why we're here. The compliance was really more for the 2012, but the two lots, the upper lots, 142, basically the one into two, these photos show, or, excuse me, this diagram shows the vantage point at which the photos that you're looking at were taken.
I understand.
Okay. The blue line, obviously the water connectivity, and then the other last thing I, I just noted was the stone wall that had been added by the Amex family. And I believe the water main, if they were to find the end of it, is probably under that new stone wall. Now, that is a presumption, but it was reiterated and mostly proven out, not distinctively proven, because they didn't actually find it, but they stopped digging so as to not disturb any more of the Amex property and/or that stone wall.
Now, whatever disturbance they've got to do, or already did, in picture seven and all that, you've got to restore all of that when you're done?
Absolutely, absolutely.
How, how long will that take?
Well...
You've got to find it, though.
Mr. Chairman, I wish I could give you a definitive answer. I've, this is my third time sitting here in front of this board, and I have prepared documents on behalf of my applicant that have gone before this board, and I have made statements in reference to schedule, and to date, none of those references have come to pass. So...
Can the Amex get in and out of their driveway today?
Yes, I believe it was brought up to grade. Again, I was there in the morning. Mike, was it brought up to grade? Yes, it was brought up to grade.
And were they given notice that this was going to happen in front of their house today?
I can't attest to that.
I don't have any other questions.
Let's ask the Amex.
They'll get a chance to testify in a minute. You didn't provide them any notice that this was going to be in front of their house today?
I personally did not. I'm unaware if the contractor did.
Okay. Thanks.
So, part of the last...
Understanding that you can't tell me a date or a time when it'll get fixed, what, what needs to occur between now and the road getting fixed in front of their place?
Sure, that's exactly where I was proceeding.
Okay, thanks.
As a result of this morning's exploratory test pits to locate the water main, they also dug additional test pits and found additional ledge, which again is the reason I can, I included that small... included that small PDF image showing the blue line, which is the anticipated route for the water main. They found more ledge, which is...will extend their schedule. The schedule that I had submitted in writing on, I believe it was September the ninth, along with this package, said that the water line would be done...I might have to flip forward, but I believe it was the nineteenth, and then with the emergency road being done the following week, the twenty-sixth. Well, the twenty-sixth is this Friday. They have still encountered ledge, so the water main will not be in by this Friday, which means the road will not be done by this Friday. I can tell you, I had a informal conversation with the site contractor personally, and he said to me, he expects barring any other unforeseen circumstances, that he can wrap it up, and in his terminology, wrap it up means the water main and the access road to gravel grade. He did not testify to pavement, but to gravel grade within ten days to fourteen working days. That's what he told me yesterday.
Okay, so in essence, fourteen days is...
I have a question.
Stan, what you got?
The MVD...
Microphone, sir. Bring it closer...bring the microphone closer to you.
Okay. The MVD, did they have diagrams of the...where the water main should be or the water pipes?
The representative on-site today did not have any such diagrams on his person.
So, he...they didn't know where the pipe really is?
That is my presumption, yes.
Because I did have...I have a little sympathy, because where we had the same situation, except they had maps showing where the water lines were, and they dug up the roads and they weren't there. And so, it took a couple more days of digging up around just to find it before they could fix it. So, you know...
Yeah, I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that occurring.
Yeah, and so, I was just wondering also, who makes up these maps with the...
Well, the long and the short of it is that in more modern projects, engineers submit as-built drawings, which are supposed to contain those, but it has not always been the case in the states that we require as-built drawings, or that they've enforced the requirement when they've had it.
I feel bad for the people. I also feel bad for the contractor, too, because he's reaching. They have to find the end of the pipe.
Yeah, no question. How deep do you gotta dig to know whether you're in the right spot for this pipe? How deep is it supposed to be?
Six feet, five to six feet, and that's the depth. They did find the pipe in several locations. They initially dug, if I can refer you basically to photo back to photo two, they initially dug in the shoulder at the end of the pavement near the traffic barrel, which is to the left side of the frame, and unfortunately found more ledge, which means they're not gonna find any pipe. So, then they came down and scratched out of the frame of this picture, but just below the frame, lower right-hand frame, within the pavement of where they thought the water would be on that side of the road. We'll call it the...let's see if that's north...so, easterly side of the road, the Amick's side of the road, and again, found ledge within twelve inches of the paved surface, which means no pipe. So, then, with all, in my opinion, good intention, they went below the Amick's driveway in the shoulder to try to minimize their disturbance, and they found the pipe coming to the side of it at about five and a half feet down. They found the blasted rock, that was the first good sign. Then they found the sand that surrounds the pipe, and they dug to the pipe, found the pipe. At that point, the MVD representative took out his little magic wand, and, you know, the signal did not change. Normally, it will change when you get near the end of the pipe, so he knew, well, we... so they dug again, about four feet, five feet further north along and closer to the driveway, still did not find the end of the pipe. That's when they made the decision to keep going. That's when I departed the site. What happened from that point, I can't attest to, but Mr. Maggio's here, and he'd be happy to answer your question.
So, can I just...sorry.
No, so basically, when Valley View Drive was originally constructed, they hit the ledge and went around it, and that's what puts the pipe out of alignment where maybe we thought or were expecting it to be?
My best forensic speculation, the reason that end of Valley View is as steep as it is and the pipe stopped where it does is because of ledge. I can't tell you where the end of that pipe is right now, but...and I can't tell you where they stopped disturbing the Amick's driveway. I don't know how in-depth that was, but I can tell you, I saw the pipe myself, I saw its trajectory, and it was headed right in towards their lawn and towards this new stone wall. Where it stops, I don't know. At some point, it does stop, and there's an end cap, and then there's a service to service their, you know, their residence. But one thing I know for sure, having been out there today, the water main itself does not extend as far north up Valley View Drive, that is, the one through eleven Valley View Drive, as...certainly as hoped by my client, but even as anticipated as the present MVD representative that was on-site today.
So, tomorrow or some other day, you're gonna do some more exploratory digging and see what you can find? If that entails disturbing more in front of their driveway and all of that, or even on the rock wall, you're committed to putting that back, I'm sure?
Absolutely. Whatever is disturbed will be restored.
Do you know when they're gonna do the rest of the looking for this pipe?
Just a minute, Mr. Chairman. Mike, would you come up, please?
Sure. I apologize, I'm eighty percent loss of hearing, so I really can't hear you back there.
Understood.
I apologize.
Mike, what's your last name?
Maggio, M-A-G-G-I-O.
Okay. Do you know when they're gonna do the excavation to find the end of the pipe?
They've been doing it now for the last three or four days.
Make sure your microphone's turned on. I don't think it...
They've been doing it for the last three or four days.
Okay.
And the water department has been out there. They have been searching and searching and searching for the water main. Water department can't find it, Public Works can't find it, and all we are is just digging up around, well, let's try here, let's try there, let's try...nobody has...the town does not have a definitive plan of exactly where it is.
Okay, but you found the pipe in one location, so now you can follow it?
Exactly, but everything was covered around blasted ledge. There was even still, where the blasted ledge was, wires from the blasted ledge at the time that it had happened.
Okay.
And it's been very, very difficult to locate the pipe, even with the water department. And we dig, we say, okay, good, it's going this way, and then all of a sudden, it doesn't go that way. The person's individual service cuts off and goes this way here, and it's almost like the pipe is...the main pipe is beyond that, and then we dig beyond that, and then it's not there. We're searching for something that nobody knows where it is, and we're looking, and we're doing it as carefully as possible, so we don't go ripping things apart and blowing mains and everything else like that. We've been going after it together with the town and the water department.
Understood. Are you gonna be out there again tomorrow, or...
Oh, yes.
And every day after that until you find it and sort it out?
Hopefully, we should be able to find it, yes. We thought we were gonna find it the other day, and nothing came up, and we were out there all day.
I understand.
I had...I had brought in hammers, because you can't do any blasting up there, because of all the homes that are around, they'd be ruining everybody's foundations and water lines, so on and so forth, and I brought a hammer up there, rented a hammer for an entire week. I have to rent the hammer for another entire week because of the ledge that's up there, number one, and number two is because nobody knows where the water main is.
Understood. So, you're gonna be out there again tomorrow looking and then keep looking until you find it?
Absolutely, we've been out there every day, working diligently.
And obviously, you wouldn't be blasting around to try to find the water main, because you won't find much left after you blast it. Eight-inch water main?
That's correct.
What's it constructed of?
The pipe I saw today was ductile iron.
Okay.
It was...I believe it was ductile. It was black.
So, it's metal?
Oh, it's metal, correct, correct. And he has a metal detector, so like I say...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, he has a metal...
And you're telling me you can't find an eight-inch steel pipe with a metal detector?
They haven't found the end of it yet.
But we just start...if you found somewhere, I mean, I'm trying...I know I'm simpleton sometimes, but if you start moving, you know, six inches at a time...
Five and a half feet down under the ground.
There's...
Yeah, but if you get a powerful enough metal detector, I mean, they can...I mean, get the...
You've got a heavy bit of iron, too, so...
You've got...I mean, get the...I mean, if they can use it for find IEDs, get the military in, and I'll...I mean, no, I'm...I am now being totally serious. I hate to think of you digging the whole place up. I'm sure that if you called in the Corps of Engineers, they'd have a piece of kit that they could tell you where the pipe went. They can find an IED out in the Arabian Desert.
Well, I'm not sure that they're willing to come and help us find an iron pipe, even if they have the equipment, but...
Oh, come on, they...
Technology-wise, I agree with you, that there ought to be a way to detect...
The National Guard would be delighted for a contribution to rebuilding their guardhouse somewhere.
I don't know if I'm going down that road with you, but...
So, all right, I give up.
But I don't know whether you...it requires that much technology to find...
The British military would.
To find an eight-inch metal pipe? Not that difficult to find.
It should be...there should be metal detectors with sufficient...
Sensitivity.
Sensitivity to find it and follow it, and MVD, I wouldn't surprise they don't own one of these things. This happens all over town, but I mean, when they're looking for pipes, right?
If I may try to clarify, I believe I said earlier, the MVD representative on-site actually did have a metal detector in his hand. What I testified saying was that the signal did not change of the device he was using. He was...we were on the path, he followed the path, and we could actually found the pipe in two locations, but you would expect the signal strength of this device to change. Its pitch changes, the sound changes, so that tells him he's near the end. It did not change. Now, because of the ledge and the depth, it works with much greater success the closer you are to the pipe, obviously, and so in this location, he did not get a reading at the surface, which was...that leads to some of the confusion as to where it goes. Until they dug the two locations and literally could connect the dots, that gave them reasonable certainty of the trajectory of the pipe. And what I'm saying is that trajectory went right towards their front lawn, so they chose not to dig there. I suspect what will happen tomorrow is the MVD representative has had time to reflect on this and is going to say, hey, you know what? Let's get on the pipe where we can, where we know it is, and let's cut it here and put in a fitting and go from there. That is an option. I'm not sure, because that's their decision, not mine, but they will...they will render that decision, I believe, in some short order. They will not be digging holes out there for a week long. That's just futile effort.
If the pipe is going into these folks' yard and under their stone wall, it raises the prospect that it was built outside of the MVD's easement, and in which case, I'm not sure whether they've got the right to go.
The stone wall would appear to be in the easement of the road.
Is it?
This stone wall's...right... Yeah, I'll let the board...
Make sure your microphone's turned on. I don't think they heard you very well.
There you go. Sorry, must've hit it. If I may approach, I have another photo that gives you a little bit more clarity on the wall, but the wall...
Yeah, please do.
The wall is strikingly close to the roadway.
From your sketch, it appears that the wall is in the public right of way, is in the road right of way. If the row...if the wall is the little red dots, is that in the...this is in the topographic subdivision plan that you gave us?
That is correct.
There's a line of little red dots. Is that the stone wall?
Well, that isn't...that is an approximation. That has not been surveyed, but if you look at the photo that's coming around, you'll see it's a reasonable approximation. That stone wall is quite close.
To the edge of pavement.
Correct. And at the terminus...excuse me, not the terminus, where the stone wall ends, it does turn ninety degrees and tie back into what I presume is probably a property pin or a bound or something similar, but it does turn and go ninety.
Yeah.
So, there will have to be, in my term, kind of a meeting of the minds on-site to decide between certainly the Amick family, the village district, and Mr. Maggio as to what a suitable resolution of this water main and getting to the pipe and attaching and maintaining. Of course, service is not an issue. I do know, I didn't take a picture of this, but I do know that the MVD representative did have a wrench on the gate valve of the water main, so they shut the main down temporarily. Can you confirm that?
Yes.
Yeah, they shut it down while they were digging, so there would've been a time, a small period of time today, that anybody serviced from that main would have not had water for a period. I don't know how long that was.
I understand. What's the difference in cost between tapping the pipe where you found it? Because you're only talking about two lots. You don't even need to extend eight inches, but I guess that's what they want, but...
Yeah, that was a...
Part of the agreement. But tapping it where it is versus making Swiss cheese out of these folks' front yard and having to put all that back?
It's...the difference is, is you're not allowed by the Department of Water Works, you're not allowed degrees, ninety degrees, twenty-two degrees, forty-five degree elbows to convert that to go across the other side of the road, the water pipe. You're not allowed, you can go twenty-two and a half, a maximum of forty-five degrees on a churn to bring it back to a full length. If we could go a ninety, then we could say, okay, here's where it is, shoot it across the street, let's go, but we can't do that, because we have to find it where it's supposed to be, so we can have twenty-two and a half degree to hook up to another twenty-two and a half degree or a forty-five degree. It's...we wanna hook up to it. I promised the town that we would do that, and that was my obligation, but I said, just show me where it is, so we can hook it up according to how the specifications are of the water department in Town Merrimack. Well, I'm over here...
No, I get that explanation, and I also understand your explanation that you don't bend eight-inch water lines in a ninety-degree angle because of the impact it's gonna have on the water flow, but I still don't understand why that affects whether you can tap in where you found it versus having to find it in another location to tap in.
I think I can answer your question. I would suspect the Amick's water service is, if not at the end, within three feet of the end of that water main, and that's done with purpose, to draw the main all the way through, so...excuse me, the water all the way through to the end of the pipe, so it doesn't get stagnant, so they don't have any undesirable poor water quality in the end of the pipe. Now, Mr. Maggio and even MVD probably suspected they would find that end, they would remove the mechanical cap, put on that fitting, and take off. That would be least impactful. Most likely, what may or may not occur, but is certainly an option, is to start further down where they have found the pipe and put on either cut-in AT, which will then allow... that would be a ninety, obviously, and then go from there. That's one option. Another option is to put in a tapping sleeve, a device that simply engulfs the pipe, then it taps and has a valve on it. That device for eight-inch is quite costly. I don't know exactly. I know it's north of five thousand, it might be south of ten thousand, but it's certainly a large order of magnitude as opposed to a single twenty-two or forty-five mechanical joint fitting as they anticipated to tie on to the end of the pipe.
No question, and I don't know that it reaches five or ten thousand dollars, but all of these holes in paving that you've got...that you've made, you gotta fix those, and there's a cost associated with that. There's a cost associated with putting this rock wall back. Now, if the...and what you say makes perfect sense in terms of the Amick's water supply being at or near the end of the pipe for all the reasons that you said, but it isn't six feet deep. If you're looking for the end of the pipe and you think the Amick's service is there, why can't you follow it from that direction?
Again, that is very sound and even common practice to... Again, uh, that is very sound and even common practice to, that's another option. But that would involve tracking an excavator onto their property, disturbing that wall and then digging a hole in their lawn. I think if it comes to that, uh, as I mentioned.
The MVD doesn't know where their water service is for their home? I mean, they've got the ability to turn it off.
They have the ability to turn it off. They also should be able, they also should be able to find the corporation, uh, yeah, the water shut off.
The curb stop is somewhere nearby.
Exactly, the curb stop. They should be able to find that. Again, I stopped by briefly this morning. I didn't have that conversation.
They think they fa- they think they found where the shut off is.
Okay.
They think. We'll know tomorrow. That's episode two. It's, it's very, very frustrating.
Where is, where they think the water shut off is compared to where you've been looking for the eight inch pipe?
Uh, the water shut off is approximately ten feet away.
Okay.
On their, on their lawn?
On the lawn, in the lawn, yeah.
And it's, it's within, it's within the, so it's within the, the ten feet of the easement. But the stone wall is like.
Yeah, I understand that, but i- if, if the curb stop is in the lawn and it's not six feet deep, then that presents a different target for the metal detector that should be something that they can get a reading on. Now, the pipe going into the house may not be metal, but the curb stop is.
Curb stop, it's likely copper, but it's still, um, detectable. Again, these very specific, uh, questions are really, uh, construction oriented in nature. I'm not there full time. Uh, Mike can tell you what happened today. I know he has. And as to what happens moving forward, I think it's a, a, should be a, um, a measure of cooperative, logistics between both the homeowner, the contractor and MVD, uh, to, to determine that plan. I, I just.
Might have been, but I heard that they didn't even get notice that you were coming to dig.
Again, sir, I, I don't control construction.
Understood. Any other questions by members of the board? I know we want to hear from the public.
What action is being requested of the board this evening, Mr. Chairman? Just my clarification.
When we last saw them and considered extending their six month extension, we heard quite a bit from the neighbors about various situations with the road use and all of that stuff. And we asked them to come back before us addressing the four items that are listed in the memorandum that's in the package from.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And it relates to blocking the access, but also getting this water pipe done so that the neighbors are not experiencing what they're experiencing. The Keach Nordstrom memo of September ninth lists the four items they were to address. And I think they, the road closed sign, they've done a good job with that. Um, that was done the morning after our meeting in July. And, um, at some point after that, I had a chance to get up there and I actually saw it and it looked like there was pretty clearly not going to let traffic get through there, so.
Yeah, one of, one of the things is they can't pave the road until they do the water thing.
No, that makes absolute sense, and I, I'm not so much troubled by the explanation that's in the memo from Keach Nordstrom. I know that we have to hear, uh, from the Amick's, but this latest effort to go digging around the front yard just had a blind, I don't know what to call it, search for a water pipe just sounds, I don't know. I want to call it Keystone Cops without interrupting.
I went through the same thing. They had, had to find the end of the water pipe to put a cap on it. There was supposed to be a cap and there wasn't. And let me tell you, after eleven thousand dollars in paving. Yeah, I'm sitting back. After eleven thousand dollars in paving, you get a little upset. Why the diagrams aren't the way they're showing. And that's why later on I'll ask who's responsible for that stuff, but that's a whole different thing. Shouldn't have to have that, and we had the same thing, uh, affected one house. But the, uh, you know, all I want to hear too is, and everybody wants to get this done as fast as possible. I just don't want to hear, well, let's take a couple of weeks and go home and think about it. What's the best way to, to do this? Hopefully, it might be resolved tomorrow. And that's all, you know, keep working at it, not, so everybody can be happy.
No, and I, I appreciate what Stan's saying, and, and let me first be clear. And I, I understand completely that the situation you're in hunting for this pipe is not your fault. This is not some, a, a situation of your making where the pipe is not drawn on a plan and it's not where it's supposed to be and all of that stuff. I get that. I understand. It's not your fault. I think that I, I would have liked to have heard more communication with the neighbors over it so that they knew what was going on, especially understanding from our previous meetings that there's some tension and some sensitivity there with working with these particular neighbors, um, that, you know, some advanced communication certainly would have been welcome. Now, all of that is not within the planning board's purview to make you do, um, but nonetheless, being neighborly and being good citizens is certainly an important part of what you've got going in your project. I don't want to stand up here and scold you about any of that stuff, but are there any other comments or questions by members of the board before we hear a little bit of public comment? Because I know these folks have come and I'm sure they have something to tell us.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just complete a couple, a few more points.
Yes, please.
Uh, in addition to the photos that we talked about and the, the challenges of the, uh, site conditions and the unknown whereabouts at the end of the pipe, I'd just like to reiterate and draw attention to that many of the items that the applicant was asked to stabilize and address have indeed been addressed. In addition, from an engineering standpoint, that's a construction, uh, activities, that is. From the engineering standpoint, all of the items of, or, excuse me, all the conditions of approval from this two lot subdivision, uh, from the July two thousand thirteen conditions have been addressed and, and have been reviewed by staff. We had submitted a, uh, electronic, uh, plan set so that Donna could go through and, and check off each of the items. They have indeed been accomplished. Recently, the, um, plan received both state subdivision and individual subsurface septic approvals as well. I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Really, the remaining items are, uh, construction in nature, and, uh, I'll let Mr. Maggio address those once we've heard from the public.
Now, I understand there's some discussion and some communication going back and forth with respect to making this emergency access lane restricted in some way and that there's involvement of the town council and some things that go beyond our planning board. Can you fill me in a little bit more on that?
I cannot. Uh, that is nothing that we, uh, Keach Nordstrom have pressed on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I think that was a, uh, discussion and perhaps a recommendation of this board last time I was here, uh, from the Amick's. If they expressed the idea to reduce access, then I believe you counseled them on how they would go about doing that. That's not something, um, that we are doing professionally on behalf of Mr. Maggio. Uh, I can tell you in light of the, or similar to that, uh, conversation was the, uh, idea or the recommendation whether this access road was to be left gravel or made paved. I can tell you, uh, with absolute certainty that it was a condition in the two thousand and twelve approval that this access road be twelve feet wide and paved to town standards. That is two inch base, one inch top. That has recently been reiterated. Uh, I believe the date was August twenty-sixth by the fire marshal, that the road is to be twelve feet wide and paved.
Okay, what I have in the town's memo, or the community development department's memo to us for our meeting tonight. The police chief, the community development director and the town's legal counsel have discussed the enforcement of the emergency access way being limited to emergency vehicles. It's been determined that a public hearing must occur with it, with the town council in order for the police to have enforcement power for limiting access to the emergency access drive to unauthorized vehicles. The interested parties will have to work with the general government department to be placed upon an upcoming town council agenda to address the issue. Now, I don't even think that that's talking about gating it. I think that's just talking about having the police have the authority to ticket somebody for ignoring a sign that says, "Emergency vehicles only." Now, it was certainly a condition of approval by this board that that road be emergency vehicles only. And I get that you put up a sign, but if they haven't taken the steps to make it enforceable by the police, what have we actually done?
That, that would occur after the final approval is town staff would go to the council and ask for the police to have the power to enforce that.
Okay. Um, is there an avenue within our discussion to have the applicant commit to taking those steps or acting in good faith to achieve that or somehow pursuing that? I know that it's not something that necessarily occurs before you sign plans, but are there?
Right. I believe there's already been a note added to the plan that no construction vehicles would be using that emergency.
And I think that they've complied with that, or at least I hope that they have.
Right. I think that's kind of the limit.
But are they committed to taking the steps to put themselves before the town council to get the police to have enforcement authority?
The town would, staff would be doing that. The, our department and the police department would be sending that to general government.
And you wouldn't need the applicant to participate in that?
The applicant would just have to finish.
Finish the road.
Right, until final approval is all done and.
I got you. Okay. So we're not relying on the applicant to take those steps? That's up to your department, and if for whatever reason we don't do it, the neighbors will help us remember to do it? Okay. Are we ready for some public testimony? Butters and interested citizens, who's first? Come on forward and tell us what's going on. Would you like to sit down instead of stand? Because we can get you the table if you got, whatever's better for you.
Okay. I'm Shawna Amick from eleven N nine Valley View, and just here tonight to hear what the plan was. I'm curious, just listening to conversation, if perhaps the reason that the end of the pipe was not found yet is because the fir- today's the first day they were digging up our yard. Is that possible? That maybe it just, just needs another day and you'll find it?
I mean, I know the applicant can't predict whether they're going to find it or not, but I think that they did express that they're going to be out there tomorrow and that they hopefully will find it tomorrow. I don't know that they can guarantee that they'll find it tomorrow because.
I don't expect that, yeah. So I, I guess what I'm asking is, um, is there any way of protecting the neighbor so that fourteen days is fourteen days? And it's not, you know, two months and we're having the conversation and the yard is still torn up? Or is there no, no protection for us in that regard?
There can be. From what I understand from Tim's memo, memo to us is that we could put a deadline on them to complete this the same way that they've had a six month extension before and another six month extension. And if they don't complete it within that time, they would have to come back to this board, ask for another extension and explain why they didn't make the first one. Now, would that stop us from approving another extension? Probably not, but it would certainly have them here answering for it. And more than likely, if thirty days, if we give them thirty days, for example, and they don't complete it in thirty days, it's going to put them on an agenda within the next few weeks, which gives them probably another twenty-one days. If they actually showed up here fifty-five, sixty days from now, having not done it with a thirty day deadline, it'd probably be not that fun of a meeting for them. I mean, we're not going to kill them, but.
Right, right. And I don't want anyone killed either. I just don't want my yard to be torn up for months at a time. You know, preferably not weeks at a time either. So if that's appropriate to request that, I'd, I'd like to request some kind of deadline with expectation that the yard be put back together.
I think that's a fair thing for the board to consider when we get to deliberating on this. Tell us what's happened since July. How about traffic? Have they done some of the things they've committed to doing?
Yep, you're exactly right. I, I didn't get to see the pictures, but I can imagine what it looks like, um, the day after. Oh, thank you, sir. I can, I'm picturing it in my head. If I'm anywhere close, um, I see it every day. But the, the day after our meeting, we did have, uh, somebody, actually two people come out and put up the, the roadblock that you see there in the photographs, and, um, the traffic has stopped.
Okay, so that roadblock's been in place the whole time and there's not been any problem with it?
No, no. I'm, uh, very grateful to the board for the way that you suggested that and, and it was seen through. So I appreciate that Mr. Maggio took those steps to see that, make that happen, and, uh, we live on a dead end again. So I'm thrilled about that.
Okay. Um, so this issue with the water pipe is the only thing that's come up since then? And then, once they find it and pave over whatever they've done and fix the yard and put the grass back and all of that, you think that would fully resolve the issue?
Uh, it seems like that would, yeah. And, and certainly I'm hoping that then the emergency access road would stay in emergency access road and whatever needs to happen so that it doesn't become a town road. But I'm, I'm assuming, if I'm hearing you correctly, that that's going to be a discussion for another time?
Well, it seems to be beyond us to sort, I mean, it, it, it won't be a town public way for the, without limited access because twelve feet wide paved doesn't meet the standard. What, it, it will be a limited access road to emergency personnel. It's a matter of how do you enforce that? Whether you have a police officer that can write a ticket for it, whether somebody puts a gate across it with a key that the police, that the fire department, police department can get to, whether there's some reason not to do that. It's done in other places. I don't know. Um, but all of those questions don't, don't reside here with this board and its jurisdiction, town council and in other places.
Could I quite challenge you there, Mr. Chairman? Because I go back to the outlet mall where we do have a barrier for the fire department to come in through the sort of tail end of Camp Sergeant Road. And that is a barrier which is radio controlled. The fire trucks have a, they hit the button and the thing goes up. It seems to work pretty well. I'm not sure, well, we can't suggest some way or another how we suggest it, but that this should be something that the fire department does do. It's worked very well. Nobody has, has got through that barrier. I've seen the fire engine actually go in there and see it goes up. I think we could talk to the fire department about it.
I, I'd comment on that. The fire department doesn't like that use.
I know they don't.
It, it works good, but the fire chief doesn't like that system. And they use it for the street lights for everything. I don't know why, but that's another thing.
I, I do recall that in this, in this project, the discussion from the fire department was that they did not want a gated emergency access lane. I don't recall why or even whether we were given an explanation as to why.
If I could make one comment to, we get several departments that were working on the project. They want to get their people out of there as fast as possible. The DEBW, the MVD, and everybody involved. So I have a feeling that they want to get it and look at all the solutions. They can wrap this up as fast as possible. Because, uh, well, this is a whole different issue, but everybody has budgets and people working and, and they got to keep them moving. So I, I kind of feel that it will, maybe I'm being optimistic, but in a couple of days, come up with a solution, the most. And I don't know about the work, about the rest of that. But they want, everybody wants to get it finished.
Mrs. Amick, um, if it's, if they're out there tomorrow working as they've said that they're going to be, are you available or around if they need to discuss with you what they need to do in your front yard or?
Yes, I am.
So you'll just be home? They can knock on the door and look for you?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there anything else other than addressing the schedule for this road and water pipe being done that you want to bring to our attention for addressing tonight?
No, I just want to say thank you again, because I know what happened as a result of our last meeting wouldn't have happened without your, your approval, so I'm grateful for that. And I'm also thankful that you're suggesting that we talk, and I heard it a few times tonight, that it would be, um, you know, I'm, I'm using my own words, but a group effort so that things aren't just done to our property without us knowing about it. So thank you for just encouraging good neighbors.
You're welcome. I hope it works out that way.
Thank you.
Did you sign in on the clipboard?
I signed in, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know you probably came together, but do you guys want to testify separately or come forward or anything you want to add or say? Got to get to the microphone even to.
I'm Amory Hammond, um, and I think my husband and I were just here, we're on the other end of the, uh, emergency road, and we're just equally concerned with through traffic if this is going to be paved. My yard hasn't been torn up because of this. I just, I want to know who we discuss going forward. It's Donna over here, um, you know, who, what other committees we need to go to to find out if we can in fact get this to be a closed road or, not closed, but barricaded somehow or, you know, not just a sign. Because we, um, the new houses that are in here now all have young children. So we like the fact that it was a dead end and we'd like it to stay that way.
Could I ask you address?
Sure, eighteen Valley View.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the current plan as approved by this board a couple of years ago and brought forward is that it's a emergency access lane that's twelve feet wide and paved, but not gated. And there'll be a sign that indicates that it's for emergency vehicles only. And there'll be a sign that indicates that it's for emergency vehicles only. And the latest discussion, and what Donna could help with, is having the town council consider whether and how to give the police department the authority to ticket people who use the emergency access. Now, more than likely, the emergency access lane gets used by a couple of the people in the neighborhood until the first one gets a ticket. And that'll probably go a long way towards resolving it, because some probably seventeen-year-old kid has zoomed down the road and get walled for a $200 ticket. That'll be a less...
The word'll get around.
The word will get around quickly.
Right, I understand and I agree with you. The only area of my concern right now for my other neighbor would be, our road isn't yet on GPS. So when I give people my address, they show up at her front door. So if they see a paved road, whether there's a sign or not, they're gonna be going through it. And I understand that those are probably people coming to my house, so therefore they're my guests. But I don't want them to inconvenience her or, you know, any of the other neighbors.
As I remember it, now that you say that, I think that that was part of the reason for the fire department not wanting the road gated. Because the emergency 911 system uses the same address mapping that your GPS does and sends their vehicles to the wrong place. So that having an ungated access is what lets them quickly make that on-the-spot adjustment to get to the right home or the right place by an ambulance or a police department. Because emergency access lanes not just for fire department. That may be why the gated thing doesn't work, because an ambulance or a police officer wouldn't necessarily be connected in that system either. And I don't know, maybe it is.
I said I had liked that gate idea, but okay, I see.
And I think to give you further advice, you'll find that once the road is there, the GPS is sort of brought up to date about it. It takes about eighteen months. It took them about eighteen months to get the airport access road onto the GPS system, so you may have to wait a little while. I mean, I do know that that took a long time to get that on.
Once that happens, can we go forward to finding if we can do a gate?
Don't ask me.
I'll be calling a different department.
That's the town council and the fire department.
Right, that's all the fire chief and the fire marshal. I'm sure it's with the addressing, not only for our town, but also for any mutually that may be coming in. It's probably one of the reasons. But I can certainly ask for a written explanation for the board so that the fire department can further explain why they do not put the gate.
Under general items of discussion, though, I don't necessarily think it's linked to this applicant or making this applicant come back and face the situation with fire access roads.
No, but I thought Donna said that she could get an explanation from the fire chief as to his objections. And I would like to know those, I would like to see that. So I said, take her up on it.
You know, absolutely, I agree. Please get that explanation, but bring it back to us under general items of concern, not this applicant. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
No, the only last thing I had, just, this is the first time I've ever been privy to something like this. I do feel for my neighbor and the timely manner in which her yard will be put back together. Is there any way that she can, I honest, I understand that, you know, once they, they still haven't found the pipe, the water main, but in our, Mike, I apologize, but in our experience with this particular builder, things don't get finished the way they're supposed to get finished. Is there any way you guys can control, like, that the cleanup happens when, in a timely manner?
I think that's what Mrs. Amick was asking us about, putting a deadline on things. And we've gotta discuss that as a board and figure out how that works and how to make it practical. It's easy to say, you know, they asked for three weeks, give them three weeks, but sometimes things take a little bit longer. And in addition, when it comes to restoring the yard and that sort of thing, getting grass to grow later and later into the year gets a little bit harder and harder to do. And I don't think that we're sort of beyond the point where it can be done. But it's not that far on the calendar before you get into the point where planting grass now doesn't do anything. You gotta come back in April to do it.
Right.
If the job is done right, they'll cut the grass down, so then they can put it back. It should end up as dirt.
Potentially so, depending on how they do it. Thank you so much for your testimony. Does anybody else wish to testify or offer the board any information? Thank you guys for your patience and thank you for offering testimony. Closed public hearing. What does the board want to do? Technically, we're here for a compliance hearing to hear the applicant's update on the items that we left them to do. They're not done, which, the primary one was construction of the water pipe, which leads to the road, which leads to everything else. The applicant's telling us he needs a little bit more time. The staff has suggested that we provide some conditions with deadlines for the applicant, but to not set down a date for another compliance hearing. What's the will of the board for discussion and/or action?
I would like to ask the applicant his best estimate for time, what he thinks it'll take him to do it.
Come forward, Mike.
Button this up, to really finish it.
We're asking about the schedule for the, for the, for what we're gonna be doing.
For completion, yeah.
For completion.
Yeah.
As soon as we find that water main, and as soon as we get through chipping away through all the leds that we have to, that's being done immediately. All the pipe has been brought, everything else, pavers have been lined up to kind of put the top coat on, put both coats on that access road. And before the fall, we plan on putting the top coat on the existing road that we have down at Valley View now, so that's where we can lower up on and get everything out of the way. We're looking to do that as quickly as possible. Believe me, we don't wanna stay there any much longer. I've been there for too long now, and it's...
I understand that, I know.
This pocket over here, it does nothing.
Thank you, Mike, for that, and I appreciate that. And I wanna press you a little bit to put some time estimates on that. But more specifically, separate from paving and installing the water main, if you have to dig up the Amick's yard, how long's it gonna take you to put it back?
The road back?
Their yard. If you have to move their rock wall, if you dig in their yard, how long's it gonna take to get it back the way it looks today?
Depending on how much of that rock wall we have to destroy.
You gotta lean forward to the microphone so we can hear you.
I don't know how, how much of that rock wall we're going to have to move. If we can, if we can get some bends in and out of that water pipe where we don't have to, we can go with the opening that's there now, there'll be nothing to repair. But more than likely, we're gonna have to repair. How far along or how much of that are we going to have to take down to put the water pipe in? We don't, no one knows yet.
Okay.
But within the next few days, we should know.
Even if you know that and you dig it up, you find the end of the pipe, let's say you have to remove the entire rock wall from one end to the other, when are you gonna have a contractor on the site putting it back?
As soon, as soon as we get the pipe in, as soon as we get the pipe in and backfill it, I wanna get it done.
Okay. Do you know who your contractor's gonna be to help put the landscaping back?
As far as what, putting the rock wall back?
Rock wall, lawn, loam, seed, whatever you just...
As far as the loam and seed and all that, yes, I do know who my contractors are. But I don't know who the contractor's gonna be to put that wall back, 'cause that's gonna be tough water to put back. And I just wanna make sure I get the right person to do the right job.
Desiree, can you pass me the picture of the wall? All right, I understand. In terms of, I know it's gonna take you some time to figure out where the pipe is, and without knowing the pipe, it's difficult to put an exact time. I think earlier you said your contractor is telling you that he, that ten to fourteen working days is what he thinks he needs to get things done. Is that correct?
Correct, but he did, he did not mention that about replacing, he didn't know, depending on how much of the stone wall that had to be replaced, then he would know exactly of how many days it'd take to replace the wall along with everything else. But yes, it was ten to fourteen days.
Okay.
He did say the ten to fourteen days.
For water pipe?
Once we found it, we'll get the pipe in, and in ten to fourteen days, we should be out.
Remove the rest of the ledge for the entire length of the access road and get the pipe, the entire pipe in and the access road piped?
God willing, yes, yes.
Now, if you want a margin of error on your ten to fourteen days, what in addition to that do you think the board should consider, just to give you a little bit of a comfort zone?
Miles, I got the spin wheel of, we're gambling again. I really can't give it, I mean, that's kind of an unfair question to ask me.
No question at all, but this board's got one opportunity to give you a deadline. It's gonna have a date. And if it's too, if it's too early, if it's too restrictive, you'll be back here before us. And if it's not too restrictive, then you'll get it done in time. So help me understand what date we should pick. Please.
Can I help? Given the project history, my best guess would probably be December fifteenth. That's about the time that the paving plants in this area should close. That is the drop-dead date. Again, the contract, you asked the contractor, is he, he's on site now, he's working now. It's the same contractor that's gonna do the restoration work, with the exception of the wall, which is a new player that came in to play just today. But that same contractor's gonna finish the water, get the road up to gravel. Then it's Mike's responsibility to get it paved. He has to get it paved before they close the plants.
Okay, I think December fifteenth is long after the plants close. I think it's probably a month longer.
It's November fifteenth, generally.
No.
No, no.
I think it's somewhere in between. They do pave up till probably about the end of November. If you get, put it down really hot, it can be done. It is done, Stan. But I would say deadline, I would say if you haven't got it done by Thanksgiving, you're in the fertilizer. I think it's gotta be done, Thanksgiving would be the last day I'd listen to.
That would give you about sixty days from today, which is a fair bit longer than the, than the contractor is saying that he needs. But again, I don't wanna force you to come back here because something minor popped up that is not anybody's fault.
Yeah, Thanksgiving's acceptable.
I have another question for you in a second, but Desiree?
Hey, I understand that we're trying to get a date to kind of press them to it, get this part of it closed out, like, done with the disturbance of the yard, the water main out, and start working on that. But the extension that we gave from the last meeting was till January fifteenth.
Yeah, it was a six-month extension from July.
So that would maintain, right? We wouldn't, and that, that's everything project completion.
Now, this water pipe installation is actually part of the other subdivision that was approved for the other side of the road and has never been completed. And so I think that's why it's being treated a little bit differently. It's not even part of this two-lot subdivision. Can't think of the other item I was gonna ask you about, whether it was something you could work with or not. Any other comments or questions? Tom?
You know, I was, I was a lot more comfortable when we were talking about thirty days. So going to sixty days seems a little extreme to me. I might be willing to compromise to forty-five. But for the amount of work that needs to be done, I don't want people walking away and saying, well, I can get to it later. You know, because I now have sixty days to do it. If they did it in thirty days and it took fifteen days before they could get back here or something like that, that would effectively give them forty-five days to get it done before they actually showed up before planning more meeting. I'd prefer to keep it a little on the shorter side than the longer side.
That's an excellent point to keep people's feet to the fire. I mean, they're the ones that said fifteen will do it, and thirty is more than that.
Fifteen working days, so remember you're talking about, that's three weeks.
Twenty-one, well, days out of thirty.
And if pressed, I'm sure they can work on a Saturday.
Maybe, I'm hoping they don't have to.
I hope so, too. I hope they find the pipe tomorrow. It's an easy connection, these guys' yards back in place, and these guys are off to the races in no time.
No hammering, but you never know. I did, I said before, I lived on thirty-three, Fallview Drive. And that hill is all ledge. That's why it never was done before. And I lived there thirty years and I saw all the expansion.
I do agree with you that you'd never know, but, and I'm looking at the minutes from when we met in July, but I'm almost certain when we met in July, the deadline on the water pipe was like two weeks. Anybody remember that?
Yeah, it was, Mr. Chairman. You're basically right, but, I mean, I am still appalled by the inability to find the end. I mean, I still find it difficult to believe that we can't find a piece of metal pipe with the, with the best possible equipment. I'm suggesting the MVD piece of equipment's obviously inadequate. But I just, I'm absolutely gobsmacked that we can't find it. I really am.
I'm not sure that we can't, we haven't yet. And one of the things that's not too positive for this applicant is that when we had the discussion in July, we're gonna go looking for the pipe, and the excavator didn't touch the soil till this morning, knowing that he's gonna be here tonight. Can the applicant have tried a little harder, maybe looked for it in July or August? I guess so. I mean, I don't know what else is on the list of things to do. If we gave him a shorter deadline, he would've. I mean, I haven't, I haven't found that part of the minutes, but is that your memory that we were talking about two weeks to do this water pipe when we met last? Is that what we talked about?
Hang on, I'm just gonna find it for you.
I mean, I don't wanna belabor the point. We're obviously gonna afford him some time to do it and a reasonable amount of time to do it. But I get Tom's point that I don't want him to give so much time that he says, we'll get, we'll get around to that later. Let's focus on something else. Oh, I know what it was that I was gonna ask you about, whether you're willing to do. Are you committed to communicating with this neighbors tomorrow about what the plan is and what's going on with DPW and what's gonna happen to their yard? Before you find out everything, before you... Make sure your microphone's on. Make, make sure it's on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't wanna come in and say something that I don't know a hundred percent. I'm not, I'm not a gambler. I'm a factual person. If I'm gonna tell you something, I'm gonna tell you something. I didn't plan on there being as much ledge in this area as I ran into. I didn't plan on hammering. I planned on blasting, but when I found out, when they did the survey, see how many homes are in the area that were in effect, and it was at my risk and nobody else's risk, I had to take it in a certain way. So I wanna do the right thing and I wanna give you the right answers. I don't wanna guess at something so that this way I'm back here a month from now and you say, hey, you said this, Maggio, how come it didn't happen? Well, I can't predict the future when the water department can't even find the end of their water pipe with all the machinery and all the technicians that we have today. I don't understand why they can't say, there it is, hook up to it. Now you have the right to say, give me a time element. They can't even do that for me.
I appreciate your answer, but first of all, my question is, will you knock on her door and talk to her in the morning before you start digging up her yard? No, you did a good job with that. I commend you for that.
I'll do a good job of keeping everybody notified of what's going on.
I also...
As long as I get the right answer to give you, I'm gonna give you the right answer. I'm not gonna lie to you and I'm not gonna make up stories to hear what you wanna hear.
No, I'm not asking you to guess. Timing-wise, though, and I don't, I don't doubt that you discovered more ledge than you thought you had. But you also didn't look for the end of this pipe until today. We met here in July, on July eighth or ninth.
I thought the water department was gonna find the water pipe a long time ago myself. They still haven't found it. Maybe I should ask them when they're gonna find it, then I can give you the right answer. I'm being honest with you.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic with that, I understand.
Let's pull a number out of the air and get on with this, because we're just spinning wheels around here. Whatever it's gonna be, thirty or forty-five working days, thirty days, forty-five days.
I like Tom's number of forty-five, yeah.
Well, if someone phrased that in form of emotion, we'll talk about it and put on it.
The other question on that is forty-five calendar days or forty-five working days?
Oh, not working days.
Calendar, yeah, we can't keep track of their work days.
Somebody calculate forty-five days from now so we got an exact calendar date. And then...
So what is that?
Today's the twenty-third of five. Today's the twenty-third of five. October.
It'd be November. What's our meeting in November?
That's going to say, that's where I am till, first week in November.
November fourth or November?
No, no, we're not setting them down to come back here for a meeting. I mean, we've given them a deadline to get this water pipe done.
November seventh is a Friday.
Forty-five days from now. Friday, November seventh.
Okay.
So, if we give you till Friday, November seventh to finish the water pipe, that's more than the time that you asked for by a factor of two, will that work for you?
I guess it's going to happen.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion? So, certainly we'll vote on the deadline for finishing the water pipe. I'm not sure whether that resolves everything else that we're here to resolve. Do we find that they've met the other requirements of compliance or have acted in good faith in pursuit thereof? Donna, do we need to do that at all?
The other two rely on this one, so it's, it's the paving, and it's the putting the yard back together after the water main. But in terms of the original conditions, there were just a couple quick notes from other departments.
Okay.
So, they're looking pretty good on that.
No, but that's, I'm glad you mentioned that. So, the November seventh deadline is to complete the water main, complete the paving, and put the Amex yard back together. Includes all of that stuff?
Yes.
Baker of the motion, Seconder of the motions, intent?
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion for November seventh? Second by Mr. Bonaslawski. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chairman, simply because I don't think it's fair to put a date on somebody when he's dependent on the MBDo's, who seem to be incredibly incompetent, but, I mean, I appreciate the principle. I just don't like the timescale.
Five, one, zero with Mr. Milne's voting opposed.
Mr. Chairman, this might be the last time I could speak about this matter, because it's going to be resolved pretty closely.
I hope so.
The pictures are very good. I want to compliment you. That road close sign should be used, the big one. If you look at the pictures, and that's going to be a half a road people are driving on, they're not going to, this, emergency and unauthorized vehicles, author, emergency unauthorized, nobody's going to see these signs, so whenever it comes up, I think they should be the larger sign that's on page one. Yeah, right in the middle of the road.
Yeah. They'll probably use the red and white do not enters that they use for one-way streets when you go up the wrong way street the wrong way, but who knows?
You know.
It's not our, not our jurisdiction.
They're already posted, but I don't think they're enough, that's all. It's nothing to do with here.
No, I appreciate that. I'm, I've got some concerns about whether signs will be effective on that, and I hope that the matter ends up before the council for the police to be able to at least have the authority. I know they're not going to sit out there in a police car and make sure they're watching, but at least have the authority to do something about it if it comes up. With that, Donna, is there any other action we need to take for this applicant tonight?
No, are you sticking with the original deadline from the last meeting for the?
All other matters, yes.
For all the other matters, just to be clear?
Yeah, that's my intent. I don't know.
That's January, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
For all of the conditions of approval? Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your effort to block the road the next day like you did before, and I understand the difficulty you're having with this water pipe. I hope it gets resolved quickly and get some effort into it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. And that brings us to item seven on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. I don't have any other items of concern.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, bring you up to date? We did talk some weeks ago about a meeting, the combined meeting of the ZBA and our good selves, and the recommendation from Pete Gagnon that the, we asked the people from title, New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Hillsborough County Conservation People to give us some talk on soils, land use, and mapping. I do now have a confirmation that they will be here on the December the ninth. It's taken a bit of effort, but we've got approval so that that meeting, which is the joint meeting between the two boards, we will have the people here to talk about that matter. And I will, out of courtesy, send the chairman of the ZBA a comment, a copy of their letter.
Thank you for that.
Does that mean there's two items on the agenda that night, one?
One related to, well, the ZBA joint meeting, but this presentation is intended to be for both us and them.
For both of us.
So, it'll be at the same meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was, that was why we specifically went for that, Bob's suggestion.
And invite the cons comm and anybody else that wants to come to-
Who wants to come, yes.
And the date for that is November?
December nine.
Nine, through, Tuesday, December the ninth.
What's the meeting?
December the ninth, okay, that's what it is.
The zoning board is going to come and have a joint meeting with us, and at that meeting-
That date was already set in stone. We're just getting this particular feature to come to that meeting.
Who is it?
The name of the person.
No, the group.
It is the, Hillsborough County Conservation District.
Wouldn't the Conservation Commission?
This has nothing to do with the town. This is a state that we shall invite the Conservation-
They're just talking about soil types and soil mapping and that sort of thing, but the Conservation Commission may have some interest.
We will certainly invite them.
Yeah.
At Bob's suggestion, I will do that as well.
Thank you for that. Donna, I understand you had some feedback on research into Home Depot and their hours.
Let me find that. So, the board asked the hours for deliveries for the Home Depot, and on Monday through Saturday, it's six AM to ten PM. On Sundays, it's eight AM to six PM, and the same note also includes that in case of inadvertent delivery outside normal hours, Home Depot shall instruct the driver to park the truck in front of the store. And that plan was signed on eight twenty-seven, two thousand and one by Nelson Disco and Pete Gagnon.
Sounds good. Tom, I think that we discussed that on election night when we met, and had kind of only a few of us here, wasn't it then? The neighbors to the Auto Fair project were suggesting that Home Depot takes some deliveries at odd times, so that's why we had some research done into it. You looked a little confused when we started, but-
Does that therefore fall within the times that were expected, or?
The app, the public testimony about deliveries did not specify that the trucks were coming at a particular time, but did suggest that it was happening in hours that disturbed them. And so, we wanted to look up what those hours were and try to get a sense of whether Home Depot was receiving deliveries outside of what they proposed to us when they got their approval. I don't know whether they are, but six AM to ten PM is a pretty wide bunch of hours. That's, and-
So, you said who complained? Neighbors?
Some of the neighbors to the, to the Auto Fair project, which was before us that day.
But one of the neighbors lives near Home Depot. And it's backing up the trucks.
The point is, Tom, you can hear the backing beep-beep-bleep noises at hours, you do hear them outside those hours, but as we all know, if a truck, if a trucker gets there, at his, he will, he can't, you can't force Home Depot to police the truckers who are independent contractors. But at least we know what the answer is.
They were unloaded during store hours.
That's the hours at which Home Depot will manage the vehicles. But if a trucker turns up at three o'clock in the morning and backs up to the, to the loading dock, it's a bit difficult for us to, who are we going to shoot, you know? And they do, because I can hear the beep-beep-beeps. I'm within the stone's throw of that store, so I can hear it, and I do hear it.
Half the time, you don't hear me talking right here.
Putting a couple of beeps into your voice.
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist that one.
It's all right, mate. I don't mind.
Are there any other discussion items or items of concern?
I have two. One, the joint meeting's on December ninth. When we talked at our bicycle meeting, picking our dates for the bicycle meeting, the meeting minutes show December ninth as a bike committee meeting. Is that a part of the ZBA meeting? Is it a super combined meeting?
It was double booked, so we can, I'm sure, reschedule.
So, we need to move that date, yeah. So, I don't know what day works better. Should we pick a new date today?
Sixteenth.
The planning board, I mean, because of the Christmas holidays and the Thanksgiving holidays, you get a shorter number of Tuesdays in the month. I don't know if we'll have two planning board meetings in December. Or what those dates would be. It would be the second, the sixteenth. You get into the twenty-third, and you don't have, anybody wants to come because of Christmas.
Right. The two are scheduled for the second and the sixteenth as of right now.
Two planning board meetings?
Oh, so that ZBA one's extra.
The ZBA joint meeting is an extra meeting, yes.
Well, maybe we bump into January and cancel December then, because otherwise you're doing it the twenty-third of December.
You can forget that.
Yeah, exactly. Everybody's gone that week. It's going to be me sitting there.
I'll be still, I'll be going to do my Christmas shopping that day.
Yeah.
Donna, can you consult with Tim to find out if we can avoid a planning board meeting on the sixteenth so that the Bike and Peds can have that date?
Sure.
And see if that works. I mean, sometimes we have low, slow agendas and things, and if we can avoid it.
Maybe too soon to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do tentative, though, maybe, tentative meeting for Bike Ped, just re-announce that.
One of the things that comes up that time of the year is all of the CUPs, and sometimes-
CIPs meetings, yes.
CUPs, CIPs, you're right. Any other discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern?
I was going to do a second one, so the, I'm just going to give an update, because periodically I should do that for the Bike Ped Committee. We met last Monday with New Hampshire DOT's Bill O'Donnell and Richard Redwansky, who are the Division Five Maintenance Division in charge of Route Three.
Yep.
And not Continental, as we know. That's turned Bike Division differently entirely, so. We met with them and kind of established a baseline of what they're expecting for a master plan for the sidewalks, and basically, it's a, kind of a, an overall map. We're going to go ahead and do it for the entire Route Three. They're really concerned more Bedford Road North for the areas of infill, identifying water, water drainage areas, like where there is stuff now, where there isn't. If we could identify stuff, I think we decided we're just going to kind of do what is existing and talk about the existing very few sidewalks, what?
Is your light on?
Oh, yes.
Oh, it's great.
Is it clicking?
She's doing a Stanley, she's sitting further back.
I'll talk closely. You should be able, if you contact Kyle Fox, to get some information on the drainage structures, because they've been doing that for their federal MS, whatever.
We're going to, we're going to overlay maps from the GIS. They've got that. We're going to put together maps. Donna and Gillian are both working on it. And they're going to, we reached out to NRPC to compare, like to overlay our layers with theirs and make the map from that, and then ask them for some additional help with some verbiage to write it up, if I remember correctly. So, that'll, our goal is to tackle that and finish it up this year, and then hopefully, we can get the information that we need from the legal regarding payment and lieu. That's the only other outstanding thing, and then we've decided to kind of focus next, next year, like January, kind of when everybody's back and out of the holidays, into getting, drumming up the support to get the Bike Ped thing going as a master plan for all of Merrimack.
Gotcha.
So, that's what we did.
Thank you for the update. Any questions for our support for that?
Just a related comment. One of the things that I was planning to do in support of this, the business of establishing a fund, you know, for sidewalks, sort of a sidewalk fund, where we could put money in and take money out, that sort of thing. I had planned to attend this workshop, but put on by the New Hampshire Legal Association, and I'm advised, we know we Merrimack no longer belong to the New Hampshire-
Municipal Association.
Municipal Association, and therefore, we are not permitted to attend their workshops. Nor was, and poor Donna had already been accepted and signed up for it, and they kicked, they, once I triggered the thing, they kicked her out, too. So, speak to your representative and encourage them, and I did copy you on the message, so.
Thank you for that comment, Nelson, and it also remind-
If you check the minutes on who voted, you might find that your local representative was not one of the ones that voted us out of the New Hampshire Municipal-
I'm sure that is right, Tom. I'm sure we wouldn't doubt that.
I would hope, Tom, that you have more influence with the others on that board than I do.
Again, if you check the minutes, I tried my level best to convince them that they should invest in the NHMA and keep things moving forward, and they chose to vote against me.
Thank you.
Maybe that'll be a decision made different. Hang on a second, Stan, before you do that. The one thing I want to add on to that comment, I know, I agree with you completely, Nelson, and support the advocacy that you've done. That said, there's an email chain that's circulated enough people that Donna should become, get with minutes and be part of the public record, because it's gone to all the board members and a lot of other folks, so once that occurs, that's all.
Which, I didn't understand your comment.
Your email, Donna's email.
My email.
RTK, right to know.
And all of that. That email circulated to enough board members to now be a public record for the board, so I was just asking Donna to include it in minutes and
Oh, okay, yeah.
Identify it as a public record, so it's not-
No problem, I-
Hanging out there. No, no, no problem at all.
Tell the world, right, yeah.
No objection to anything that you've done. It's just I'd want to make it in the public domain.
I just want to make a comment about the report that Desiree gave and Nelson added to. And the minutes were sent out to us today, and the whole thing is very, very informative. And I could see a lot of work was put into it by some people, so if people do have time that weren't there, it's good to read it, so. But you were there.
Breaching to the choir?
I did talk to a couple of folks, the gentleman who loaned me the Walkability book and a few others to try to encourage them to come, and one of them said, "Hey, Nelson's our representative for the committee." I'm like, "Yeah, you can have more people. You can come." More voices, doesn't hurt, so I don't know if that'll have any effect, but I don't want to call anybody out on television either, so. Anybody else with comments or other items of concern? Let's deal with the minutes of September ninth, twenty fourteen.
Stan?
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of September ninth as printed.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fault. Any, any other discussion? Tom?
I would like to respectfully request that instead of at line six on page one, we say that the planning board members were absent, that at least for myself and Lynn Christensen, we might note the conflict with the state primary voting day, and that the two of us had official duties at the polling place that night.
I agree with that. How, what's the best way to indicate? I mean, we can certainly, I've seen other boards around the state use the word planning members are excused, rather than absent.
It's a good word.
And quite often, in many places throughout Merrimack, we will say that people are excused if they have contacted and dealt with the chairman in advance. Not that it makes a whole lot of difference. We're not going to get kicked off because of missing a meeting. But it just would look nicer if we note that we were called away due to conflicts by the state primary election.
Okay.
I think you could, you could put in another line, planning board members absent, and then underneath, planning board members working the voting polls.
Excused to work on voting, yeah.
Why don't we just say planning, planning board members excused for other duties and leave it at that?
Does that work, if we say planning members excused?
If you want to do that, fine, I'm-
I think it's a very good point.
I kind of wanted to put in the conflict with the primary election night. I mean, we used to intentionally not have planning board meetings on election night, but that was when the chairman was also involved in the election night activities.
Chairman and John Segaty and all the other, the other folks.
So, I mean, I'm not real particular, as long as something additional gets put in there.
No, and I wish that I had actually meant to say that at the meeting, rather than not, and then it would have been reflected in the minutes. Kick myself a little bit for not remembering to do that. So, the minutes shall so reflect that the planning board members, Koenig and Christensen, were participating in the election and so therefore excused, and Mike was just missing.
I'd probably leave off that last little bit.
Tine, can you fix that up for me? Any other discussion on these minutes of September ninth? All in favor of approving them as so amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to approve the minutes, and that brings us to our adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Desiree? All in favor? Nelson? Nelson can second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.